And we are online, so welcome everyone. Today is a coaching with Jordan Drummond from the BBC Poker. Most of you probably know him. I think he's been coaching like 10 years, I think. And you have the staple of your own and... Yeah, would you like to say anything?
Sure, I'll take over. What's going on guys? You know, happy to be here. And yeah, I've been playing and coaching for... Yeah, that's, I mean, it's crazy how long it's been out, but more than a decade. So I've been going at it for a while and just, you know, happy to be here and take a look at some hands, see what's going on. So it should be fun.
Oh yeah, I was, before we go to hands, I noticed that you started to stream on YouTube. Is there like a, is that like a permanent thing or did you just try it out or? Because you used to stream on Twitch.
Right. Um, no, it's not, it's not necessarily a permanent thing. It's just, and I'm still gonna be streaming on Twitch from time to time for sure. But I'm just kinda having fun and experimenting with things, seeing what happens, seeing... Yeah, seeing if, well, you know, what kind of numbers I can get on, on different platforms. Just, just messing around, man. Just playing around, having fun.
Yeah, for me, that's a strange format. I never done that then. But yeah, I'm sure there's, it's like Joe Ingram and those, they do the YouTube. So yeah, it's quite popular also.
Yep.
So yeah, maybe we could start like five minutes early. I hope everyone is there who wanted to be from the beginning. And this is the first hand. This one was sent to the forum by one of the forum members in Finnish Poker. Poker site. So basically he opens here and...
Big blind calls? Sure. Sure. So I mean, there's gonna be a decent amount of larger bet sizes that take place on this flop. Obviously his hands like pretty clean to the smaller sizing choices. Because you, you get some protection, you get some die from weaker hands in the range. So so I think the small bets okay, but I do think that like if someone wanted to, they could make a good argument around going bigger with the whole range or they could they could, um, they could, anyways, if you bet bigger than this, I'd be okay with it, but this is not bad. This is fine.
Yeah. So what kind of, because I remember if I, there was like an ace, king, X kind of hands that you wanted to bet big.
Sure.
Usually, what kind of hands are the hands that you usually like to?
Want to scale up sizing with?
Yeah.
Yeah. So usually, so like there are basically like two approaches, I would say. And that's why it's, you know, that's why it's kind of, it's a little bit flexible. So the two approaches are like, one approach would be like, you want to bet most of the hands in your range here, you want to check a little bit, and then you want to bet the whole range to a bigger size. That's probably like okay here, um, at least okay-ish. The other approach is to, you know, which is what a solver would do. What a solver would do, if you didn't want to use just one sizing choice, the solver would use like hands like ace, king, ace, queen. Basically some of the asymmetric hands that maybe have a little bit of vulnerability to them. And he would bet those hands really big. So you know, it might even bet bigger than pot, but it might bet pot with those hands. And then it would bet the other hands like, you know, between 30 and 60%, something like that. And so like this hand would fall into like that kind of small sizing choice, which is why I think this is totally fine. But if you wanted to simplify things down and go into like one sizing, you might have bet bigger than this. So it's just, it's, it's, this is fine. As I said, it's just...
Does he have the stack sizes to have any?
Yeah, you're very, yeah, being very deep, it's very important that you've got a bigger bet going in with hands like ace, king and ace, queen. So now that again, so the basic idea is that there are two ways to do that, right? You can either bet ace, king and ace, queen bigger and leave the other hands out or or you can bet the whole range to a slightly larger size. But it does, at this stack depth, it'll get pretty expensive. If when he has ace, when your student here has, or whoever this player is, when the player who played this hand has ace, king or ace, queen. If the, if this is the same bet that they use, that's gonna be expensive.
Yeah.
So yeah, I would say that like ace, king, ace, queen, probably jack, seven suited. Those hands probably want to go, go bigger in some, in some way. So...
Yeah. And then there's the check raise.
Yeah, it's a bit annoying. Um, the sizing choice is not big enough, I don't think. It's, it's a, it's a fine sizing choice, but it's not big enough to make me fold this hand. There's a threshold where if he makes it big enough, I will start folding this hand. It's not here, you know, we're not, we're not there yet.
So do you think people would check raise bigger here? Like if they're know what they're doing or is that like a?
I mean, so this is like a decent, this is a decent size, but yeah, I do think that it's reasonable to have a bigger size here sometimes. So I, I would, I would think some players would go bigger on occasion.
Yeah.
And but the important thing for me, like when I'm thinking about this, I'm not really thinking about what he's doing. Uh, when we play tournaments, we don't really play enough hands with one opponent to really have an opinion about what they're doing, right? Like we just don't, I don't know anything about him. Um, and you know, I doubt that the person who played this hand knows a lot about what this player is doing.
He actually said that this is like the, some Vina Max Pro, like aggressive pro player, but...
Okay, sure. So I mean, I would, I would on average not know too much. So my, my main consideration here is making sure that I don't fold too much. And in that kind of vein, I would want to make sure I'm defending about half my range. Uh, at least. And if you're, if you think about all of the hands you're betting, particularly if you, if you're thinking about all the hands that you're betting small and you think about calling at least 50% of the time, calling or raising at least 50% of the time against this bet, this raise. This hand is probably not gonna be able to fold. So, um...
Yeah. So is there here the importance that you have to back draw, back, back, you're gonna get the straight like a?
Yeah, the important thing is mostly that like you can't, you just can't have too high of a fold percentage.
Yeah.
This hand is gonna probably have to defend the flop.
Yeah, this one is check, check. And then, because when I went through this hand, I was thinking, I can't fold this one because there's the flush draw and this one doesn't really hit in there. But what's your opinion?
Um... So check, raise, flop, check, check, turn, and then overbet river?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, these spots are a little bit annoying. One of the reasons that they're annoying is, um, I don't think people bluff enough to these lines, which is kind of dangerous to say, but I tend to think that people are a little bit overweight strength here, but they certainly have the bluffs if they, if they choose. I think that you'd probably bet some amount of your ace, X on the turn. I think you might bet some of your, you know, some of your, your sets and things like would almost all bet on the turn. So this, this is the type of situation that involves a little bit of hero calling. You've got some straight draws, some busted straight draws and some busted flush draws that you can fold for sure. Which unfortunately means that like this hand's not gonna get to pure fold here, I don't think. So I do think this hand has to call sometimes, but I think you're screwed. So I would call with this hand like at a small weight, expecting it to call more, more in a model uh, than I, than I'm gonna call it. But I would feel like if I folded this hand every single time, that's just a mistake. And I'd feel like if I call this hand every single time, I'm just being really generous to, to my opponents. So there are some situations, particularly river decisions, where I really do advocate for using a randomizer or like a random number generator.
Yeah.
This is one of them. And I would probably call this hand at like a 25% weight, knowing that I'm supposed to call it more than that, but assuming that my opponent has just too many value bets and he's not bluffing enough. And that I, that like really I want to pure fold, but I just think that's too exploitable. So I would, so I would call like 25% or something like that. So I would call expecting to lose. I would call expecting to lose, but knowing that theoretically I'm supposed to call and I, and I would feel like obligated to defend the hand 25% of the time.
Yeah. So how much it matters if this is like a good Vina Max Pro player, if you know that he's a good, or if you know that it's, it's not like it's just a?
You know, like I don't give a lot of credit, like, yeah, so I, I don't put too much stock into like people's reputations. There's a line, obviously, uh, where I put a lot of stock into someone's reputation. So for example, if your name's Feder Haltz or if your name is, you know, John Van Fleet, Ape Styles.
Yeah.
Um, then I'm gonna put a lot of stock into who they are. But you know, outside of that, I don't, um, because there are just, there are just too many players who don't know who like, who, who aren't, who, who have reputations for being quite good, but when you, but, but aren't, basically, but aren't. So, um, yeah, I would still, I would still feel, feel like holding here is good.
Oh yeah, foots all forever.
You can't fold all the time. This hand is just like most of your range, right? Like this is the hand you show up with here the most. You're gonna have a jet, you know, you bet small, so you don't, you're gonna be missing some of your strongest hands. You called a raise, you didn't re-raise. You didn't bet the turn when he checked you. So like, you're gonna have a jack, like you're just gonna have a jack. So if you always fold a jack, you're just folding way too much. He's gonna run you over. Uh, or he could run you over. So you have to call this hand sometimes, but in my opinion, uh, he's not bluffing enough. So you know, I would, I would mix it and I would, and I would call like I said, 25% weight or so.
Yeah. Yes, Igahan was the one who sent, Footsal forever says in Finnish that that's a good answer. That this guy doesn't have an empty pockets, something like that. I don't know. But yeah. Okay. So let's go for the, I had few hands that I marked myself. Let me get those.
Yep. Should you have bet the turn though? No, I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think we should have bet the turn.
Okay. So let's see, yeah, it should be good on the stream also. And the voice levels are fine now, right? Someone mentioned that you were a little bit low, but should be okay. This was 50 euro tournament. Bounty tournament.
Sure.
So this one I played my, yeah, this one was on stream. So I usually don't play like this, but so that's why.
When you say play like this, what do you mean? You just mean the open?
Nah, I'm getting, I open, but you see later. I mean, I'm usually more tight.
Okay.
Let's see. So this one goes. So not sure about this bet either here. So what did you?
Yeah, I think the bet's good. Um, this situation is, it's not that strong of a flop for you as the opener. It's not a bad flop. It's got a high card on it. So this type of flop um, is typically going to have like a high frequency c-bet strategy to a smaller size. So this is gonna be a reasonably good answer.
Yeah.
Once again, uh, now here the check raise size is a little bit bigger, but you're still gonna be defending probably 45% or so of what you bet at a minimum. On the flop. Now you could solve it and you could get maybe a slightly more precise answer. It might be more, it might be less. But um, at least that. And so in that context, that's not just a pair of queens. It's not just a pair of queens and a flush draw. So it's gonna be some other stuff. And um, in that context, this hand can't really fold. I don't think, I don't think it's close either. I'd snap call, but it's not a mixed fold or anything. It's just, you just call. So these spots are always annoying. So um, yeah. So it's, you know, you're asking good questions, uh, which is, which is great. So what's annoying about it is that when you have a pair of sevens, like you block some of the, the ways that people value it to these kind of large sizings. You block a set of sevens. You block queen seven, you block seven two suited. So although seven two suited, you don't need to block, I guess. Um, it's blocked by the board. But um, but yeah, so like, you know, like it's, in that sense, it's a bit annoying. At the same time, I don't really like having a 10 in my hand. Um, you do have other ways of having a seven. So you have like seven, eight suited or seven, six suited or ace, seven suited. And those are just better ways to defend the turn. So I would pure fold here.
Yeah.
I think having a 10 of clubs is really not helpful. Um, it's not, it's not that harmful, but if he's over bluffing, it's probably gonna be with the 10 of clubs. So what that mean, what I mean by that is when he check raises the flop, he has to have something, right? So he might have a flush draw. He might have a backdoor flush draw. If he has a backdoor flush draw, it might be a hand like king, jack with the king of diamonds, but it also might be a hand like king 10 of clubs, right? Or, or jack 10 of clubs. Now those hands should probably check fold the turn, but if they don't check fold the turn and he decides to bluff them, it sucks to block them. Right? Like it's impossible for him to have king 10 of clubs here or jack 10 of clubs. So it's not like your blocker is really bad, particularly if he plays well, but it's not helpful. Um, I don't really like having a 10 because um, I just don't, I don't really like having a 10 much. I prefer to have six, six, seven, six or seven, eight. I don't think those block things is what, uh, that are as relevant. So, um, yeah, it's all like that. Yeah, I might, I might hero call the turn of like seven, six or ace, seven or something. Ace seven has outs against queen seven, which I think is important. Um, ace seven has outs against queen deuce suited, which uh, he, he might be check raising as well. So when you think about what he's check raising, queen seven, queen deuce, if you have ace seven or king seven suited, um, you can suck out. But if you have 10 70, he's queen seven, you're just dead. And if he has, you know, if you have 10 70, he's queen deuce, you're, you're just dead. So, so those are just better ways to call the turn and you don't have to call that much. I mean, there's a big check raise sizing on the flop. So I would, I would pure fold here. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think too much about it.
I went for corner, of course, in bets here and...
Yeah. So now obviously the problem is, um, you beat all the draws and uh, you're getting a very good price, which is people, a lot of people, they play poker kind of through storytelling or through narrative. And like, so like they might say like, okay, you check raise the flop, you barrel the turn and now you shove the river. So that's a story. But the story doesn't, isn't enough because you need math. And the real, the reality of the situation is he's betting small. I mean, he's only betting half pot. It's not, it's not a big bet. Um, you do beat a lot of bluffs. Uh, all the diamonds, for example, you beat. So you know, the river call is not that bad. I mean, the river call also like you might have some checks from the one pair of queen X range. So on the river, having a seven actually goes up because when he does actually triple it off, he's more likely to have queen seven or queen deuce or seven deuce suited or a set of sevens or a set of deuces. Then your opponent is definitely queen, jack, maybe, you know, check raise the flop, check raise the turn, but then maybe they check the river. Maybe they check the turn sometimes. So your seven, as like the aggression continues to ramp, like the seven is kind of going up in relevance. So I actually don't think it's the worst river call. Um, I think the river call is kind of fine. Um, I think the turn call is where we, where we made the mistake.
Yeah, I think I was using the GTO plus, which is kind of like a PSol, right? I'm not sure if you're familiar with the program, but and I don't know if I know how to use it correctly, but I think it said that, yeah, we fold, fold the small amount of time we can like call the turn, but mostly fold and then, then the river we have to call.
Yeah, okay. I'm not surprised by that.
But I was a little bit surprised to see his hand, but...
Yeah, I mean, like it's, he's, he's plays fine. I mean, it's not, it's not bad. Um, he should check raise the flop fairly often. Um, he can mix the turn and then like he gets, he has half pot on the river. So you know, I think the river is close. Uh, I don't know what a solver would say, but I do think the solver, I know what a solver would say about the flop. It would say check raise is good. I don't know exactly what it would say about the turn, but I would assume that it's gonna say that mix is good. And once you get to the river, I mean, he's betting half pot. So like if it's, even if it says check, I don't care. Like it's not a big deal. Shove's probably fine. Um, the EV difference is gonna be small. So you know, his play seems okay, kind of annoying, but when you have a pair of sevens and call it off and he's got, he's got a thinner value hand. But I don't think the play was bad from your opponent.
Yeah. Okay. This one is checked.
Sure. So I, I think that the pre-flop play was standard, right? Pure call, seems standard. I don't think there's any re-raising or anything like that. And then, um, flop is a mix. You can bet sometimes, I think, and check sometimes. Both plays I think are gonna be reasonable. It's important to bet sometimes, like just, you know, for people like it's, you're gonna have trips. So you have to just make sure that you're pretending to have trips enough of the time. So sometimes you want to go ahead and take a shot at it, but, but checking is, is totally standard and fine. Yeah, I'd bet a lot on the turn. I wouldn't always bet, but I would bet, I would bet mostly. Uh, I, maybe I'd always bet. I might be, yeah, I'd probably always bet. I think I would always bet the turn.
What kind of size? I think I also tried to check this one on GTO plus, but I think it wanted this bet, bet small.
Yeah. So I think that what happens is you want to think about, for me, and like solvers are, solvers are great for figuring out how things work. But for me, it's always about mechanics, like underlying fundamentals, like how does it work? So what's going on in my opinion here is you're supposed to very high frequency bet the flop with a nine. So if you actually have trips, like the vast majority of your trips combos bet the flop. If you have a pair, I would say the vast majority of your paired combos, except for a trap like pocket aces, bets the flop. So if you have pocket sevens and you called pre-flop or pocket eights and you called pre-flop, that's a bet on the flop. Um, if you have aces or kings, maybe, you know, maybe those can check more sometimes just because they they're, they're less vulnerable to overcards. So, so we, if we have trips, we bet. If we have, you know, pocket eights, we bet. So on the turn, we mostly have like a pair of threes or a pair of deuces if we're gonna bet. Supported by like a few nines, which would trap and supported by like nine, three suited, because you would have that also, I think. So yeah, I mean, like I think small betting makes some sense. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if, if bet 60% is good though. Like this doesn't, I don't think this is bad. Um, I also don't, I wouldn't, I don't think betting like pot is good, but I think this is fine. I don't think this is a bad bet. Solver might like something smaller. I would be surprised though, to be honest. I think this is pretty good. I like this answer. Sure. So from my perspective, this is hard. And um, part of the reason why it's hard, which is like you said, it's great because you're asking good questions. Part of the reason why it's hard is because you, you clearly have better bluffs than this. So like, how do I define a better bluff than this? I mean, like if you have four, five of hearts. Or like five, six of hearts or six, four of hearts, those are kind of like very combos that are like very far down. They're low. Uh, like there's a principle for bluffing and the principle is bluffing from the bottom of the deck up. You want to bluff with the worst hands first. But at the same time, you also want to make sure you unbluff, sorry, unblock, um, auto folds. So here your opponent might have check called the turn with like king, eight of diamonds. He might have check called the turn with king, six of diamonds, might have check called the turn with queen, eight of diamonds. Those are reasonable plays. Ace, eight of diamonds, ace, six of diamonds. Those types of hands make sense to check call. Uh, check calling like queen, eight without diamonds, probably not as good. So you, so you're gonna see that that eight of diamonds blocker, that six of diamonds blocker aren't super helpful. And you do have a lot of other ways to bluff the river. And the reason for that is simple. You check, flop goes check, chat, you call pre, check, check flop. You bet the turn. I mean, you have tons of stuff. So I don't think you need to bluff with diamonds. I also don't think your range bets in a great way anyway. I mean, you're gonna river a pair of jacks, that's gonna have to bet. You're gonna have trips, that's gonna have to bet. But like your three and your deuce, which was a decent part, particularly your three, which was a decent part of your turn betting range, is probably gonna check the river. So I don't think you have a lot of value here. You have some, but not a lot, but you got a lot of bluffs because the board bricked. So you've got an imbalance is how I would think about it. You've got too many bluffs and you've got not enough value. So it's very important that you don't bluff too much and that you respect the fact that you only have a few value bets. And so, um, I would probably just lose actually. I would just check this back and give up.
So you have to, if you would have, like you said, like four or five of hearts, then you would go for?
I would pull the trigger. Yeah.
So what would be the sizing if you bluff this?
So you, then you want to go back to, so when you're asking the sizing question, all we're doing is we're going back to, to answering the question, what am I value betting? So I'm value betting trips, which I still have sometimes. I'm value betting boats, which I still have sometimes. I'd check back nine, three probably on the flop all the time. And then you're value betting jack, X. So the, the important part is to be consistent with where the value is coming from. So the value is coming from a jack or trips? So I'd probably shove. I'd probably shove because I think that those hands can probably just jam. I don't see any reason why they can't. Um, against like check call, against check, check flop, check call. Your opponent doesn't have trips very often. There's no reason to think that the check calling range is a jack very often. It's mostly ace high, a pair of threes, a pair of deuces. So I don't, I don't see why I wouldn't be able to shove and I would just jam.
Yeah. Cause I, I didn't think he would have three ever here because he checked the turn.
Sure. Yeah, it's believable. Ace high or something. Most of the threes, yeah, most of the threes would probably bet the turn. He's probably got a lot of two X though. Probably a lot of two X, probably a lot of uh, ace high. So yeah, my, my sizing would be a shove if I bet, but um...
Yeah. I think he had to check.
Yeah. Sure.
Of course he's not folding then.
Nope.
Next.
Sure. So we can raise and we can call. Both plays are probably gonna be acceptable-ish. Um, this is a little bit of a bigger size, so I probably prefer call.
Yeah, that was my question about this one, yeah.
But if, if someone raised, I wouldn't be like, wow, like what a mistake. I'd just be like, maybe, but I'd probably call.
Yeah, cause I went for the raise. I wasn't sure because, yeah, he bet to the half pot, so...
I don't, like I said, I don't hate it. Um, I prefer calling. So, but I don't, I don't hate it. So...
Yeah.
I'm probably gonna check the turn. Um, this turn is a, is a turn that where the strategy is to bet very often. So I'm doing that, knowing that I'm supposed to bet here a lot. But given the half pot bet size on the flop, I'm a little bit concerned about the strength of the range. We, you bet half pot, we still check raise, which I think is okay. And like I said, I don't think it's tragic. Um, but it does get, you are getting to the point where you're starting to strengthen the range. And if you keep strengthening it, which is what happens, right? So as we continue, as we raise the flop, the range gets stronger for our opponent. If we, as we bet the turn, the range continues to get stronger. If we, if we jam the river, the range gets stronger still. So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make sure that it doesn't get so strong that you always lose. Okay? So this type of hand, this hand has some really attractive properties around checking. The attractive properties around checking are that it doesn't give up so much money when he bluffs, right? Like his overcards are devalued to a large degree because you've got the flush draw. So also these overcards are devalued because you've got the queen. So when you think about the overcards that bet called the flop, they are kind of specific. I mean, there's not that much eight, nine in the opening range because it doesn't open eight, nine offsuit. So the, the types of hands it's gonna be is gonna be like queen, jack, king, queen, ace, queen, ace, king, ace, jack. Those are gonna be the types of hands that when he's weak, but doesn't want to fold the flop after having c-bet and he bet calls the flop, those are the types of hands that your opponent's gonna show up with the most. Similarly, like those will handle show up with just backdoor flush draws that have to pure call. So when you've got the overcard with the queen and then you've got the flush draw, you've got a very resilient hand against his air component. So if he checks back, you're doing fine. If he bets and you're behind, obviously we're gonna call, you can suck out. Um, if he bets and he's bluffing, he's not doing it with a lot of equity because you've got, again, you've got this resilient hand in the sense that his outs aren't, aren't very clean. If he's got king, queen offsuit, he's not got clean outs. If he's got king, queen of hearts, he's not got clean outs. So, um, yeah. So like I, I would think about it like that and I would, uh, I would probably have checked here.
So how would it change if it's like a five of hearts or something that we don't get the flush draw? Does it change anything or?
Yeah, I would be more inclined to bet. Um, but I would, but given that he bet half pot, I would probably still want to check. Like given that his flop bet size was larger, I would probably still want to check, but I would be more inclined to bet. This is, for example, if you had queen, seven of hearts here, I would be more inclined to bet than, than I am. Or if you had queen, seven of spades more specifically, like just to keep the hand consistent. If you had queen, seven of spades, I would be more inclined to bet, but I would probably still check. But I, but I would be more inclined to bet. I think that this is like the perfect hand to check and like try to represent that you're check folding and let him hang himself, you know, let him bluff too much.
Yeah.
With no equity, uh, with a little bit, very little equity.
I also assume the size is gonna be small, right?
Or, well, the check rate, you want to think about the check raise strategy, right? So the check raise strategy is gonna be seven X and 10 X. Um, so yeah, I mean, like seven X probably wants to bet small, 10 X at this stack depth, 10 X can bet small too. So yeah, I think you probably want to bet seven or something. I think if you bet seven, you're gonna have 30 left and there's gonna be 32 in the middle. So you can still shove a 10 on the river if you want to. Um, it's not a geometric size, so it's not perfect for a 10, but it does allow you to bet those seven X parts of your range. So yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I would think betting small is the right, is the play.
Yeah. Check, check.
I have to check.
Yeah, I think.
An annoying river and now we check.
I think. He should value bet that one, right?
Um, it's kind of complicated. Um, I'm not sure. Probably not, but maybe.
Ah, okay.
So it's interesting when he has this hand. I think it's not as good anymore. So, and the reason I think that is because he blocks your calls and he also blocks the weakest part of your check raising range. So that seven, I think is not very helpful. That seven means that it's like, it's slightly, it's slightly more likely he's being trapped. Because when you check raise the flop and check the turn, you're, you're kind of telling one of two stories, right? Either one, I was bluffing and I'm check folding now. Or two, I was check raising thinly for value with a pair of sevens and I don't want to barrel it off. Those are the two stories you're telling. Now sometimes, uh, you're gonna have a trap, but mostly you're telling one of those two stories. And so he just makes it a little bit less likely that you've got that seven. If you have air, you can't call the river anyway. So he kind of makes it just a little bit more likely that you've got one of those traps. And so I don't, I think that like, if he has ace, eight, I would bet, you know, if he had ace, eight of diamonds, I'd, I'd probably bet. Um, excuse me, but when they, they, I would probably check it back. He blocks how you're gonna hero call. He makes it more likely he's getting trapped. You know, he doesn't beat all the ace, X combos anyway. So like if you have ace, if you have ace, jack of spades, or if you have ace, nine of spades or ace, eight of spades or something, he loses. So I would, I think the check's reasonable.
Yeah. I was thinking if you had the tens, should we also then check this one?
Sure.
Cause we could have check ten, right? If we, we don't.
Yeah, you could, you could have a trap still. It's not impossible to have a trap. So, yeah, that's why, right? So he blocks how he's gonna get value. So it's, it's not, I don't think it's a great bet.
Yeah. Let's see, what's this one? Oh yeah, this one was a final, I remember this was final table bubble. It's a knockout tournament.
Sure.
So this one is, I think this is like when we go through this, because we just I guess this is here, here you have to. Yeah, I think also this one, when I call, we should also be check raising this one, right?
I would check raise at a high clip, yeah. I would have checked at a lot, at a, at a very good frequency. A lot of the top pair hands are gonna be check raises here. You do have the hearts, so like you don't necessarily get as much protection and at these kind of shorter stacks, protection's a big part of of check raising. So I don't hate calling, but... So I don't hate calling, but I would check raise a lot.
Yeah, because I was thinking when, when we can go through this, because this is quite simple when he's just bet, we can't, I don't think we can fold here. But these are the Yeah, these are the spots where you like, because this is final table bubble, I was feeling that he has to have something. And what, what, yeah, because if I have the heart, ten of hearts also, then.
It's annoying, but like, it sucks, like the ten of hearts is not a great blocker.
Yeah.
But I just go, your hand can't fold though, so it's annoying, you know?
Yeah, so basically, here you have to check raise quite often, that's the lesson here.
It's not a lesson, I mean, he had threes, he had set, he lost. You know, it's gone. The, the lesson is to not make top pair when someone else makes a set, that's the lesson. But, but I, I don't, I, at these, at these shorter stacks, you're gonna want to check raise a lot of your top pairs. You can actually check raise them like, kind of all the way down, even. You're gonna want to check call, because I'm getting asked, like, can we talk about like more how the check calling range would work? So you're gonna want to check call with your strongest hands, so it's kind of counterintuitive, but if you had a set here, I would call. And the reason is, if you have a set, you're not, your hand's not vulnerable. And it's actually not that hard to get stacks in, because the stacked pot ratio is so tight. So you can get huge fractions of your opponent's stack with like the passive lines at these shorter stacks. So your really, really, really strong hands will play kind of passively here.
Yeah.
But like, you're kind of like, more vulnerable value bets would, would be check raising here and, and just calling it off. And the kicker is relevant, so like you will see kind of a like hierarchically check raising, so like, starting with king, queen, check raising the most if you have it, king, jack checking the second most, king, ten checking the third most, et cetera, all the way down. But you'll still see a lot of check raising with king seven. So
Yeah, was it one of your seminars or some of the bundle videos or somewhere? I remember that these kind of flops, if you have like a king three, those you wanna more check call, but if you have like a king five, like a top two, then, then you'd raise more, was it like that?
Yeah, that's, that's deeper, that tends to be a little bit deeper. At this stack depth, you're probably gonna see a lot of call. I mean, I'm not, I may be wrong, but I think you're gonna see a lot of calling with king five, at this stacked up.
Yeah, that's one thing I learned from the seminar, so was the video, I don't remember, but, but I usually go check raise in some point. If we're like thirty big plus or something, you wanna build the pot, but yeah, those are the spots where it's good to check call also. I wonder what's this one? Oh yeah, this is kind of short also. Do we just fold this one?
No. Still can't fold, still can't fold. I'm not, I, I, I'm not as good here, so that's just the truth. Like, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's, if there, how much check raising there is. I kind of want to check raise. Obviously, we don't have an ace very often. It's possible that the check raising is like nil, because you don't have an ace, like, almost at all. I don't expect there to be much check raising, but I feel like this hand's really good for it, so I kind of want to do it anyway. And there's not, I don't, I don't think there's zero, like you're gonna have ace eight and ace seven for sure, in this pre-flop range, I would say. And you're gonna check raise those, I think. Like, it's, it's not gonna be a big deal to check raise those anyway. But ace high flops, like there's, you just don't have it, you just don't cover the ace very well, so like if someone wants to just play call fold with their range here, like that seems good. So I know that that's, you know, for some people, that sounds like a lot of kind of complicated language. So what I mean is, we're suffering from very significant range disadvantages here. And the reason we say that we're suffering from very significant range disadvantages is because we would shove most of our ace high hands pre-flop. So we don't have very many ways of making top pair. So because we don't have very many ways of making top pair, we probably shouldn't check raise very often. It's a, you know, against this bet size, his hand feels like it kind of wants to do it. I do think you could flat here with like ace seven and ace eight still, pre-flop. And ace six specifically. And I do think that you could potentially introduce check raising those hands here. But if you didn't want to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, it's not a big deal, and if you just wanted to like pure call with those hands, I think that's probably fine.
So with these stacks, I see if it's, if that's like a queen, six, three, you want to check raise that one?
Yeah, with queen six, yeah, queen, sure, queen six, three is a hell of a lot easier to check raise. Yeah, correct. Then, then it's much more obvious that I want to check raise. Here, it's very specifically, it might be the case that, like at this stack depth, that we don't get to check raise at all. But, but yeah, like I said, calling, calling's fine. If you check raise, I don't think it's bad, but I would, but like calling's fine. Now we've got just a naked gut shot, so we're not gonna be able to call twice here. So now it's going to be either raise or fold. And raising's not that good, so I mean, you could just fold.
Yeah. Let's see, what this one? Yeah, this one is about the do we squeeze here? Because I'm, I'm not sure that this is deep stack, so.
Cold four betting? Sure, so cold, yeah, so cold, so no. So first of all, I would not squeeze here. Or it's not, I don't even have to squeeze, I would just call it a cold four bet, so. Yeah, so I would not four bet here. And the ways that I would four bet would just be a little bit stronger. So I don't think it's a big deal if you threw, if you called for ace queen, but even that is kind of sensitive. A lot of the four betting strategy you should expect to be suited. So a lot of what goes on when we're four betting people is suited, so like king ten suited, king, jack suited, king, queen suited, ace, jack suited, ace, queen suited. That's a big part of how you four bet light. This hand's not, so.
Yeah, because I remember when we took lessons like last year, I took like four, something with you. You noticed that I wasn't, well, squeal also four bet from the blinds enough, so I was, yeah, that's why I was taking this hand, because I'm not sure, still sure what kind of hands do we like to do, especially this deep. So it's like king, jack suited, king, queen, uh, king ten suited, we can those.
Yeah, I mean, like in this position, you know, king ten suited is a bit of a stretch, but like just, it's, it's, when you're trying to establish like your go-to hands for four betting cold, the suited part is like generally a good way to go. So like king, queen suited, ace, jack suited, ace, queen suited. You know, king, jack suited is gonna mix. It's not like I would just pure four bet king, jack suited here every single time, I wouldn't do that. But if I'm gonna bluff sometimes, it's gonna be with that. You know, even, even a hand like ace, queen offsuit here, you could fold sometimes, so, but like this, this hand I would never cold four bet with. But yeah, like ace, queen offsuit, king, jack suited, ace, jack suited, like those are the staples of how to do it. Obviously, ace, queen suited. I don't really have a calling range here, which I should also mention, so I wouldn't have any cold calls, so if I had pocket eights, I would just fold. If I had pocket nines, I would just fold. If I had pocket sevens, I would just fold. If I had like, you know, king, queen offsuit, I would just fold. If I had jack ten suited, I would just fold. So I'm gonna re-raise or fold, and that's how I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna have kind of like tens plus, so to speak, and like ace, queen suited plus for sure, and then I'm gonna mix in some bluffs, which would be like ace, jack suited, ace, queen offsuit, king, queen suited, king, jack suited, kind of thing.
Yeah, because I, yeah, I feel like I play quite tight on these spots, so I guess it's correct.
Well, playing quite tight is good. It's just like, you do want to kind of know how to bluff a little bit. And the way to bluff a little bit is, like I said, king, queen suited, king, jack suited, ace, jack suited.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, this one, again, like this is not that special hand, but just getting the ideas how to play these spots. That's why I put this one here.
Sure.
Again, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
For me, the, I'm, I'm thinking again, the size is big here.
Yeah, so I don't know why. So I mean, like these bigger bet sizes, I don't think are as good in these situations, but so I, you know, just kind of quick reference, I don't think this, I wouldn't be using these bet sizes on these paired boards as much as your opponents seem to be doing it. But I've got a good hand for check raising, like your, your hand is decent, at least for check raising, so I don't mind if you raise. Calling's kind of awkward. I think against this position, I wouldn't call, so I'd fold and kind of hate it.
Again, I, I was trying to check this one from the GTO plus, and I think it wanted to raise, was it the, if you have ace of spades? And like ace, two, ace, four, that kind of, if you have the ace of spades. And then, I think it was calling the bigger ones, like the ace eight, if you have the ace of spades, but this one, he wanted to fold.
Okay, yeah, I'm not that surprised by that, against half pot, like folding seems good. So I don't, like I said, I don't hate raising, but I think folding's good too, and if the solver says fold, just fold.
Yeah, but I, I, yeah, for me, it's, I haven't really that much, yeah, I need to try to a little bit maybe check raise more if I have the ace of spades, kind of like these kind of spots. Because it doesn't hit him that well. We have more fives here, right? So it's.
Yeah, so I mean, like he's, he's got to really, I think, be careful about how, just how much betting the player's doing. There's, I don't, I don't think there's too much betting that can be done. And I think it's very easy for someone to overdo it. So it's tempting to, to find out and raise, but I don't, like I said, if the solver says, if you ran this, and the solver's like, yeah, you should fold, then fold. I'm not, you know, better than a solver, so.
Yeah, but I don't know if I know how to use the solvers correctly, because I, I always feel like many people get the solver, and then they don't know how to use it, and then they get the wrong results, and that leads to that's why I like, like your seminars and stuff, because you, you know how to use it, and you can show them.
I appreciate that.
I don't have to run myself.
Yeah, so I actually did check, I did just check this out, and your hand, I, because I actually have this solved. Just by coincidence. And your hand is mixing between call and fold.
I like the call also.
It does, yeah, it does mix between call and fold. It doesn't raise. So it's raising kind of like with a, in a reverse hierarchy, where you're bluff raising with like queen four with the queen of spades, or queen six with the queen of spades. So like those, what, those variations, check raise, this very, and they check raise pretty, pretty often, like, not all the time, but around eighty percent of the time. And then these variations, this hand is mixing between call and fold, so. You didn't, you didn't make a mistake by folding, but had you called, it wouldn't be a big deal, and my opinion about raising sucked, so. Don't raise, don't raise.
Okay, that was the last one of the mark hands, so let's open those. I have the filter that takes the, yeah, should be the raise opportunity.
Yep.
For the continuation, but let's see, these are from let's see. I'll just take big plan, because there's the most spots, of course. Play all hands. Let's go.
Call's good. Call's good. So there's gonna be a lot of leading on this card, but not from this hand. So your hand was a good check, but the opening range from the hijack doesn't have many offsuit eight X combos, and it has none. So there's no offsuit eight X combos in this, in this range, maybe there's king eight offsuit sometimes, but, but, but not much, I don't think, I wouldn't open it. So I don't think that there's, this range interacts with this eight very well, so the, the eight pairing gives your range a lot of really strong hands that his range is missing. And so you're going to start to see some leading, but I would check this hand, so. Like the flop, I like the turn check.
Yeah, we check, I'm not sure about that, pump it.
Yeah, this is an awkward situation. This is a runout that doesn't come up very often. When you don't bet the turn, you actually have an ace a lot.
Yeah.
Obviously, when he checks the turn, he still has an ace a lot, he should be barreling with, I think, ace, king, and ace, queen, particularly after you check. So after you don't lead, you kind of send a signal that you have an eight less often. So ace, king, and ace, queen can continue betting. That being said, you're probably still on average, like, you know, he's got, that's still a polarization advantage, I would say. Like, he still has the strongest ace X relative to you, if I had to guess, just because he'd probably three bet shove some ace, jack pre-flop, he might check raise a flop with it. So
Yeah.
I think it's close between betting and checking. I don't think you made a mistake by checking. I don't necessarily think your range pure checks, I think this hand's gonna be one that bets sometimes. I don't think the sizing's gonna get to be very large, so I think if you do bet, the sizing has to be on the smaller side. Your opponent has an ace too often to bet big. So so I, you know, I might bet like half pot, I might bet something like that, it's like something kind of modest-ish. And then I would check sometimes, so I don't think this was bad.
Okay, this one again, should be, do we need to shove this one, or? What?
No, I don't think so. I don't think you need to shove.
Because the call is okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I always feel like if it's four way, like this kind of ace could be, end up in trouble.
Problem? Yeah, it, it, it can work that way, but I still think it's a call. So here you go, this is the trouble spot.
Yep.
So the first thing is that, on what most people like automatically identify, is that they're probably screwed. So when he bets four ways to his sizing choice, probably not doing well. That being said, so what's that mean, though? So that means that, first of all, when we think about your range, you, you know, ace, king, ace, queen, those hands are gonna squeeze pre-flop. Ace, jack, maybe to some extent, might squeeze pre-flop. So ace ten is one of the better hands you have, and you're already feeling like you're just gonna lose. So how do you think about what to do? Well, I think that what's happened is a large fraction of your ace X is either worth zero or worth less than zero. I think that that's kind of where that feeling comes from. Is the, is the correct identification that most of your ace X hands have been devalued. Like they're, like it's great that you have top pair, but it's worthless now, almost. That being said, you can't fold every single top pair you have. And it's not so much that you have ace ten, because the kicker doesn't matter. The reason the kicker doesn't matter is because your opponent doesn't really have ace nine for making this bet, in my opinion. His range for making his bets, like ace, king, ace, jack, sets. What, what does matter and what does differentiate this hand is the ace of hearts. So I would basically pure fold a huge fraction of your ace X component here. But I wouldn't be able to do it with the ace of hearts. So um, the ace, the ace of hearts component for me would pure call, and I would pure fold the rest of the block.
Yeah.
And that, do I know, have I spent a bunch of time with four-way solvers? Nope. Do I know that's the right answer? Nope. Do I think that's probably the right answer, though? Yep, I do.
So yeah, here, usually, so I would think that here you want that he would have the flush draws also on his betting range, so how does the ace of hearts work there?
Well, it crushes his equity, because when you have the ace of hearts, if he makes his flush on the turn, you've got outs, whereas if you have like ace seven of diamonds, and he's got king, queen, because, but keep in mind, right, when he has an ace high flush draw, he's got top pair. So when you, the flush draws we're talking about are like king, queen of hearts, or queen ten of hearts, or ten, nine of hearts. And so if he makes his flush, you actually aren't dead, you've got outs. So that's very bad for his draws, but it's also very, it's very good for your hand. And then, because of your, your performance against his bluffs is much stronger uh, than when you have like ace ten of diamonds, for example.
Yeah.
And, and then similarly, there's just one less out. So you know, if you have, if you have ace ten of diamonds, and if the ace of hearts pairs, you've got trips, but if he's got a flush, you lose. So there's one less, there's one less heart in the deck. So you, your equity goes up when you have the ace of hearts against his bluffs. And I think this is just a way to defend the ace X component of your range, is to do it when you have the ace of hearts. It's to be less kicker oriented, because your kickers are mostly irrelevant. You, you can make arguments around like blockers, and like where's bluffs come from, and maybe he's got queen ten of clubs, and like maybe you'd rather have ace nine for that reason, like sure, maybe. But it's not as relevant as having the ace of hearts. So like, the over, overriding way to defend here and call the flop, in my opinion, is gonna be with the ace of hearts. So I would fold the other variations, but I'd call it this one. You'd expect very low frequency bet from your opponent now, you'd expect high frequency check. Although I don't think it's, I don't think, I think that's what you'd expect, but I don't think it makes as much sense as people think it does. And that's because he can't have a jack, but neither can you. If you have a jack, you have to fold the flop. If you have queen, jack, and you call the flop, you're, you're suicidal. Like, there's just, there's just no, there's no money in a jack, like you're just gonna lose too often. So you can't have a pair of jacks, he can't have a pair of jacks, so the jack's just a blank. It makes it less likely that either one of you has ace, jack, it's probably more relevant for him than it is for you. But, you know, like your range is just an ace a bunch. And his range is just an ace a bunch. It kind of is what it is.
So here we are again, kind of like the same situation, we get the four hearts.
So this, there's no, there's no, like, there's no EV in this hand, unfortunately. So it looks like there is, but there's not. And that's because when he bets as big as he did on the flop, he doesn't have kings. Sorry, someone thought that he has kings, he doesn't. So when he bets as big as he did four ways on the flop, he doesn't have kings. And since he doesn't have kings, the only hand that he can have that you might make some money against is like pocket force, because that hand, that hand just got counterfeit. But if he has an ace, there's no money in your hand. If he has a bluff with a jack in it, he's got quads now, there's no money in your hand. He doesn't have, he doesn't have bluff catches to be, for you, so like, there's no, if you check, you can try to, you know, you can hope that he bluffs. But to be honest, his bluffs even have some shodown value, because they're gonna be like king, queen of hearts or something, or king ten of hearts. So he could have queen ten of hearts, so I think this is the right bet size from your opponent. I think if you had decided to bet, which I don't think is the end of the world, I think if you decide to bet, you should bet three, or like bet two, or bet like, you know, two and a half or something, and try to get him to like, just put in money with something that's try to get him to hero call with king high or something. So I don't think that this is a bet big situation, and then on the river, as far as your answer goes, I think your hand is probably mostly a call. It's the, it's kind of like the nuts, your hand's kind of like It's the, it's kind of like the nuts, your hand's kind of like the nuts, except for the times that he decided to just like, check back the turn with pocket aces or ace jack, or. Whatever, I don't think that there's much E V in raising, so I would just call. So I'd call.
And I fold.
Yeah.
Advantage size, yeah.
Yeah, it's the size, so, you know, and I, and I, I could be convinced that I, that I shouldn't call, um, I would fold against like a thirty percent size, but this isn't a thirty percent size, so. Against this specific sizing choice, with like a backdoor straight draw and a backdoor flush draw, I would call. I don't think it's very good, so I could easily be persuaded that I should just fold, but I would call against this sizing choice.
Well, yeah, what about the pre-flop, we don't wanna shove this one either.
Yeah, I trust me.
So it's okay to shove also, yeah.
Yeah, sure, it's fine. I don't think it's like a huge E V difference, but.
That's the same.
Yeah, I'm gonna call, I'm not gonna raise here.
What about the, yeah, the flop, let's go back, what if, uh, does it change anything if you bet the like the one point five, or?
I mean, I'd be more inclined to raise, but I'd still call a lot.
Ah, okay.
So like, as he, as his bet sizing goes up, your check raise frequency goes down, as his bet sizing goes down, your check raise frequency goes up, so that's just a fact, so that's, that's how it works. Um, but. Why, like, would I be check raising like a lot of bottom pair, you know, probably not, um, probably not. I don't think it's, I don't, I think it's in there, sometimes, probably, like, it's probably a check raise sometimes, like, it's a small size, I would check raise sometimes, personally, I would check raise it like, like a quarter of the time, but I wouldn't always check raise it, so.
So does it matter that we have the, like, the ace here when we check raise, because some somehow I I feel like somewhere, right?
Yeah, it matters a little bit, you can't get shoved on as much, which is really, which is really helpful, so like, when he shoves the flop and you have the ace of clubs, most of the time, he just has jacks. If you don't have the ace of clubs and you check raise the flop and he shoves on you, sometimes he has ace five of clubs, or ace four of clubs, or ace ten of clubs, or ace jack of clubs, and that really sucks, so, um, yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, I think your answer's a check, yeah, so you're gonna be value betting the river very thinly, but not with this, so that's just too thin, so I'd check.
And he should be betting the turn, I guess.
Yeah, pure wait, his hand's a zero percent check.
What about the, let's say he would bet the half pot, and then he would have like a pot behind here.
Time about the river?
The ten, yeah, he's the ten, changing, is he still?
I, his hand goes for, his hand goes for three streets.
Ah.
I bet, if I'm, if I'm him and you're playing against me, I'm betting the flop, then I'm betting the turn, then I'm shoving the river, lots of luck.
Yeah.
So the way that it would work from my perspective is, when your opponent calls the flop, he's got a lot of club, club hands, obviously. Then, then there's a pair of nines, which will mix to check raise on the flop, um, but is obviously gonna call the flop a lot, and then there's just like a bunch of three X, two X, and straight draws. Once we bet the turn, the range starts to narrow, the straight draws have to fold, some fraction of the flush draws have to fold. So, for example, like, if your opponent, if if you, as the hero here, have ten, five of clubs, and in position barrels, you have to fold, so, um. You're going to have less flush draws when you, once you call the turn, you're going to have. Mostly a pair of, a pair of threes, deuces, against some nine X combos, once you you decide to call, some fraction of your nine X block might check raise the turn. Um, and you're gonna have some eight X of clubs or eight X of spades for calling the turn, so once we get to the river, the ten is a blank. Uh, it's actually very difficult for the hero here in this hand to actually have a pair of tens, very difficult. Um, ten, five of clubs, I told you, would fold the turn, so there's just, yeah, jack ten of clubs would not fold the turn, but it might raise, so. There's just not very many ways for hero to have a ten, um, obviously, two pair is possible, but two pair is always possible, so, um. Ace nine is likely still the best hand overwhelmingly, and I would just triple it off, bet flop, bet turn, shove river, mostly get called by a pair of nines.
Yeah, I was thinking that you can't fold the nine either, that much, yeah.
Yeah, correct, yeah. I'd fold.
Not the same hand.
Okay. Happens. So this is a flop where there's likely to be a small amount of dunk betting, minus the fact that you have ten big blinds, so I'm not exactly sure. How, if, how little dunk betting there is at this particular stack depth, there might be zero, it wouldn't surprise me, if I did dunk bet, I would bet one, so. Uh, I'm not like sold on dunk betting being great here, at this S, uh, this stacked to pot ratio, or this stacked depth in general. But if you, if you bet one, I'd be like, alright, whatever, like, I think it's fine, um, once you check, I'd call, I don't think you can raise, I don't think you can fold, so I'd just call.
What about, uh, let's say we had the twenty, is it ten more dunking, if you have ten big blinds, you both of us?
Yeah, yeah, as we get deeper, I know, for sure, there's more, there, I know that, I know for sure dunking exists on these flops, I just don't run them with ten big blinds. So, I don't play a lot of, I don't do a lot of post-flop analysis with ten big blind stacks, so. I don't know if when we have ten big blinds, it completely gets subtracted from the strategy. And, now it might, and it might not, and I don't have no idea, so like, if you, you know, if you bet one, fine, and if you don't bet one, fine, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't have an opinion, um. And.
I went here for the, yeah.
Thirty big blinds, if you had thirty big blinds, betting one's good, you know, betting, betting, you know, dunk betting for a small size or whatever is good, so, I think, um. That shows you how, you know, like, that shows you how much depth there is to this game, though, I, this is my job, like, this is what I do, I figure out how this shit works, and I don't know, you know, like, and I say that a lot, I just don't know. Um, so. Yeah, you know, checking seems fine, uh, once you check, I would do a lot of calling, I think that a mistake people make is they feel like they have to check jam here. What ends up happening when you check jam here, particularly when it's a two-tone texture, is he calls a lot of flush draws, and all the flush draws nuke your equity, so I don't really like check shoving here, I would just call.
Yeah, I went for the old school, I guess if we have like seven big plus, then we would go more, but.
Sure, yeah, if we're a little bit short, there's a point where you can't call anymore, and then you just jam. Um, and I don't think this is bad definitively, but I would probably have called with this hand.
Yeah, I think I learned this one, like, check.
I could run this, it might, yeah, I, I could run this, and it might say, like, you know, shoving's better than I think, and I'd be like, alright, whatever, but I would have called. Yeah, pure fold, easy. Still in the fold camp.
Oh, yeah. It is the same hand, yeah.
Still have to call, so knowing that he's betting bigger, but it's not gonna be able to fold.
I think this one, do you like to dunk bet this one also, like, what's that called, not dunk bet, well, or what's the?
Sure, no, so it's dunk betting, that's the right language, um, so, yeah, so I think that the situation calls for dunk betting a lot, uh, so once your opponent, so if you go back to the flop. When your opponent bets really big like this, there are implications, and so, no- nothing you do is without consequence. If you bet really small, the consequences are, you can have a lot of different types of hands. If you bet really big, your good hands get more value, but the consequence is that you have a more specific type of range. So this range for betting this size is probably more often a pair of nines, it's probably more often pocket jacks, it's less often a pair of fours, it's less often a pair of fives. If he bets smaller, if your opponent bets smaller here, then it would more often be a pair of fours or a pair of fives. So once the five, when your opponent bets to this size, and then the turn pairs the five, there's a lot of leading that takes place, you can go to turn now, there's a lot of leading that takes place, um, here. Does this hand lead? I don't know, maybe, um, it's probably not bad, uh, I would probably lead sometimes, does it lead all the time? Probably not. Your ha- your hand's kind of got, got this weird property, which is that even though it's really ugly, it's kind of a medium strength hand. The reason it's a medium strength hand is because your opponent shouldn't have too many ace high hands to that big bet on the flop. So the bet on the flop is like a bluff, where, where the bluffs are like jack ten, or queen jack, or queen ten, or six, seven, or seven, eight, or king, or king, king three suited or something. So like, or queen three suited, some of, some of that is probably betting to that bigger size on the flop, or it's a pair of nines. So you're in a situation where you basically beat the bluffs, and you lose to the value, so. You know, your hand's got some cool properties, like the ace of hearts is helpful, um, so I, I think leading's great, but I, I also think checking has a lot of merit. Um, as a result of thinking that both things are reasonable, I'd mix, um, I'd do both, but.
So do you like, like to, uh, check this more, let's say we would have like eight, seven, or something like that?
Well, I would check more if you had ace three without, without a heart, so if you had ace three, no heart, I'd probably like to check more. But I think with the ace of hearts, there's like some interesting stuff you can do, so, so you know, a heart comes in, you can just slam it, so, um. Yeah, I mean, like, I, I, I think it's interesting, I like, I, I guess I would mix this hand. Yeah, so you're in an interesting situation again, where you can check the check raise, you can bet as a bluff. Um, you still have kind of a medium strength hand-ish, you still beat bluffs, you still lose to anything else. Your hand has cool blocking effects, obviously, with the ace of hearts. Um, I kind of think that you would rather bluff with ace three with the three kicker, so I would personally have bluff with this one. And I think it maybe you, maybe there's like more checking with like ace ten or something, I don't know how relevant that is when he bets bigger on the flop. But if he bets smaller on the flop, that's certainly how it would work, so. I'm kind of extrapolating a little bit, for kind of like for my own mixing, kind of sake.
Yeah.
This is very interesting when he chooses this size, so.
Yeah, I don't know what he would check on the, yeah, because for me, it again feels like maybe he hit the flush that he doesn't wanna bet on the turn or something, but. Of course, you always think that, think the worst when they bet big, that they must have.
Sure.
Something good.
Yeah, so. For me, what I would be thinking about is, and a lot, I think a lot of players here would really wanna shove, and I, and I wouldn't. And the reason I wouldn't wanna shove is because I wouldn't think. That this va- this, the range for value here was very thin, so I wouldn't think that this was like king jack or king ten. I would think that it was more likely that this was like a flush, or a boat, or a bluff. And if it's a flush or a boat or a bluff, well, you beat the bluffs, and if he's got a flush or a boat, he's not gonna fold, so shoving is kind of like incineration. Now, I could be wrong, if your opponent's got thin value bets here, then shoving's great, so if your opponent's gonna have king, queen here, or if your opponent's gonna have ace, king here, or if your opponent's gonna have king, jack here. And then when you shove, your opponent will fold those hands, then shoving goes up in value, it's got a lot of merit, um, and I think jamming makes tons of sense, because you block the flushes, and then the medium strength hands will fold. The problem is, the medium strength hands have to be there, and I just don't know that they are when people bet to this sizing, uh, choice in this spot, so.
Yeah, I don't see.
I would be looking at it from like a call-fold perspective, I think your hand does make a lot of sense as a call, so I don't mind calling, I think it's pretty, pretty.
But, yeah, I wasn't even thinking about shoving, so, that's one thing I might be, yeah, think about more.
Well, yeah, you wanna just think about like what types of hands he can have, if he can have those medium strength hands, then maybe you wanna think about shoving, but if he can't, and his bet sizing would suggest he can't. But if he can't, then, then I, I don't think shoving's gonna be quite as, quite as good, unless you think your opponent's capable of bet folding flushes, which.
Yeah.
Is a really, you know, is a, is a, is something that you'll, you might see in a solver, you know, solution sometimes, maybe, probably not, but maybe, um. But like humans don't, aren't, aren't gonna be folding flushes, so, I, at least not reliably, so.
Oh, yeah, that's the nickname of your P P C. It's a Vilemax. Let's see, maybe one more hand. Hmm.
Sure.
Boring one.
Oh, you want to judge, we just fold this one.
So, yeah, this one's call, right? Or do you want free?
Well, there's not really, I mean, like, I haven't, I haven't done as much work against min raise, so I don't think that min raise is like, gonna be a very good answer theoretically. So, but people use it a lot, and I think I'm gonna end up doing so, a bunch of work against min raise, because it gets used so much, but I don't think it's good, so. Um, and the reason that it's not good is because the big blind just calls a lot, and you don't, it doesn't really work the way that the small blind would hope it would work, um. I do think that this hand, there's some merit to this hand three betting as a shove potentially, um, but I think that you should probably just mostly call, and that's what I would do, I would call. But I don't, I do think there's some merit to a jam, um.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, let's go, uh, is it okay to me to show the charts that you have at the website at the moment?
Yeah, go for it, go for it.
Cause I, I got that one, and one thing I really like about these charts that are given, because you have the twenty-five, this, because usually it's only ten, twenty, thirty.
Sure.
So let's see, and here I notice, yeah, here I noticed also that the many times, the size is quite large, it's, is it the four or three and a half?
Yeah, it's because, it's because min raise is just like not effective, it doesn't, it doesn't really accomplish anything, you just, the big blind just doesn't have much fold equity, and so. Against, you know, good player on good player, with balanced range on balanced range, um. Bigger sizings work better from a small blind typically, if you're gonna raise, there's a lot of limping, but if you're gonna raise, typically, the introduction of that strategy is better off if it's, if it's a bit larger.
Yeah.
Um.
But I.
Counter strategy against small size, against some min raises, like, you call tons, you fold like very little, but you fold some of the weakest hands potentially, um, you still have to have a three bet range, though.
Yeah.
So.
Cause I noticed it's quite interesting, because I, I think most of people still use three or three and a half, but here, if you were like a fifty. Here it shows that you use the four and a half, so it gets quite.
Yeah, I think we saw some, I think, I think that's because we saw, like, we ran things and we tested a bunch of sizings, and this is less about like what people are doing, and more about what we think is most effective. Um, and like what generates the most E V, and so, as, as a result, like, this, this, the strategies kind of reflect that.
Is there a strategy, I was wondering, how do we play against limp prey, if it's the big blind raises us? How do we react, because here's just a.
With ace four?
I mean, I mean, certainly using this chart, if we wanna check, if we limp, the big blind raise, what can we call, is there option for that?
I think it's, um, I think it's the small blind strategy just below that, right, so like the.
But this is three, is it just? Is it called three bet, if we limp?
Yeah, I, I mean, it would basically, I don't think so, but I think, I think that's what it is, though, I don't, I think you're, that the language should be a little bit different.
Cause I was wondering if we limp from the small blind and the big blind, which, which one would we hear watch, because there's only jam and three bet, so I was wondering. Cause.
Uh, blind, blind versus blind trees there, um. I think, I think people in the chats are, are, use these, like, just use charts more than I do, I'm, I'm mostly spending my, my time in actual solvers, um.
Cause this one calls as eleven thousand years.
Okay, I'll have, I'll have the team get, I'll have the team get you an answer, I'll have the team.
Yeah, okay.
Just, yeah, just type me, just type me out the question, I'll have the team get you an answer.
Okay, so I think you have a next lesson, so I, I'll let you go, and I, I'd like to really.
Well, let's finish the hand, though, let's finish the hand, I, I, I do have a lesson, so I do have to go, but, but, um, we can finish the hand off.
Let's see.
Call is good. Call's still good. So this is another interesting situation, so, I would check, um. I don't think that there should be like too much E V in a bet, uh, I don't think your opponent double barrelled the turn with pocket kings or pocket queens or king jack. So, I think that the barreling, so essentially, like, the value comes from him bluffing with the wrong hand, so it would come from him like bluffing with king high, and then having to check call with it. Or rivering a pair of fives, that's where most of the check calls come from, it's interesting, in this situation, your opponent does a lot of folding once they check. Um, so I'd expect that the check fold percentage here is gonna be extraordinarily high, and I, and I would be bluffing here, all, if I had anything that was a bluff, I'd bluff with it. Like, like, almost everything, I would just slam it in, once I face check, um.
For me, this is like this classic spot that you don't get any value from the, like.
Yeah, they got, yeah, so this hand, I think you just pure check here, and then you have like trips, and you have ace jack, and, and you just shove those.
Yeah, you have.
And so it's not surprising, yeah, that's where, that's where the, that's where, that, that makes sense, um, like, some kind of five makes a lot of sense, but, you know, bet, bet, and then improve to equity and give up. So I, I do think your opponent played the hand well, and I do think that there's gonna be some calls actually that have to come from this block, so I think that your opponent does have to hero call that hand sometimes. But I don't think that that translates to this hand being a good bet, um, because I think that your opponents will just have like ace queen sometimes, or too much, or ace ten too much, or, I guess ace ten's a chop.
Yeah.
Yeah, hmm, maybe I should jam, maybe I should jam, hey, like, ace ten's a chop, I didn't even think about that, if ace ten's a chop, maybe I should jam this hand, uh, maybe sometimes, I think it's really interesting, um.
Yeah, cause he, he, he doesn't have any age there.
Well, it's just ace queen and ace king, uh, it's, it's just not enough, it's not as many combos, so, um, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think about that properly, um. I, I think that we should still check a lot, so I, I still think checking mostly is the answer, but I, I'm, I'm curious if like, if I solve this, if there's like a, like a thirty percent bet or something. I do think mostly check is, is the right play, though, so I still, I stand by that, but, but, yeah, but, but valuing it sometimes might not be the worst.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, thanks very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming, and, and I'll talk to you later, hopefully.
Yeah, cheers, thanks, guys.
Have a, okay, bye. Have a, okay, bye.